I want to open the October 17th meeting of the planning board, the town of Newbury. My name is John Weiss, to my left.
I'm George Morris.
Jim Robinson.
Brian, your town council's office.
Rachel McNamara.
Pete Pecos.
Martha Taylor, town planner.
Thank you all. The minutes we will not be approving tonight, but we'll take a look at them and approve them at the next meeting. We have a continued public hearing. We have a continued public hearing, special permit application for dog daycare, training and play groups, 35 Downfall Road map, R41 lot, 60 applicant general board, Seacoast Canine. We have a special permit findings and decision that was mailed out to all the board members. And before going through that, I do want to get a clarification from the applicant on -- and listen, Ben, you've seen this. Yes. Of a clarification on item nine in the conditions, where it says there shall be no more than 61 day vehicle trips, 30 round trips per week, total, and no more than 12 one-way vehicle trips, six round trips per day, totaled by employees transporting dogs to and from the property. So it's my understanding that that transporting dogs was language that you asked for to be put in.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And at first, I think we thought that was adequate, but one of the issues that I am having with that is that Martha points out to me that there are some trips that are generated by employees picking up keys and the like. And so my question is, is that additive, or is it 60 trips per week?
It would be 60 trips per week.
It will be 60.
So the people picking up keys are transporting dogs, and then they pick up their keys.
So it's not 120, or more than 60?
No.
Okay. Everybody got that? We need a clarification on that. Thank you very much. Because what the board, I think, agreed to last week, and what we had directed Martha to write, was 60. What we do agree to is that that does not include Jenny and your people who live with you.
Right.
Going to the store, going to the post-op, whatever that may be. That's not part of the 60.
Right.
Right? Okay. Everybody got that? Okay, so maybe, does this language need to be adjusted? What do you think, Brian?
Should we remove the word transporting, or adjust that somehow?
I would just exclude the qualification of employees transporting.
Just say employees.
Dogs to and from, to just simply employees, because you just heard.
To and from the property. And do you need further clarification for Jenny and her?
Well, I think perhaps because Dori--
Non-resident employees, perhaps, maybe.
I think non-resident employees, because Dory is a resident employee, and Jenny--
That's fine. So what would you want to have, because we'll change it right now?
Non-resident employees.
Okay.
And that would also apply to?
Yes, number four.
Right. Number four, I'm going to choose four.
Okay. With that, can, should we, excuse, just for a second. Hold, just for a second. Do we need to make this change, Brian, now, or should we wait until I read through the conditions? In other words, I've written it in, but we want to vote, the board should vote to make this change.
Well, my understanding is that this isn't approved by the board in any way, so I think I should press it.
It's not.
You can approve it as a comment for that.
Okay, fine.
So I have a concern with that, because you just took out, you said only non-resident employees are doing those trips. What about she and her two other people? That's three other people. They can run up and down unlimited now, because they're resident employees. It should be total, well, the deal was 12 trips, six trips in, six trips out, total for the business.
I don't know.
I know.
It's traffic.
It's traffic.
It's traffic.
And if we say the two non-resident employees can do the 12 trips, that means Jenny and her two other people can do 100 trips, and we have no recourse.
Well, I'm looking--
They can.
I'm looking at Jenny and looking for a response. I don't know what that means. I'm not running the business. You know what I mean? I'm just--
I know what it means. It means that their doors open.
I mean, 60 trips are what we would need each week to transport the dogs for the daycare.
But the issue is the traffic.
Yeah.
Overall traffic.
Yeah, but--
But those are all the trips that we would need to take.
Wait.
Sorry.
Hold on for a second, okay. Why don't you get up? One of the dilemmas is because we're not having this on TV, there's no, so would you get up and respond to that?
Sort of stand.
And so stand, so that, right about next to the wall, so it can be seen. If that works.
There's some space, so that people who are dressing, the camera on the board can actually have this area, so the camera will be here.
Yeah, that's fine.
Then I can move to the seat.
So in response to Mr. Woolworth's comment about that gives you the freeway, or leeway, to do anything in terms of transporting dogs, how do you respond to that?
I guess when we had discussed it, for the total number of dogs, maximum that we would ever have at capacity, 60 trips a week is what would be required to get those dogs to and from.
Well, then you're doing it, or your employees are doing it.
Right. So we'll only be allowed to four employees anyway, and so I guess it's more a numbers game, because it's not like we have 40 dogs there every day right now.
I get you. I understand.
So essentially, yes, when we hit capacity, 60 trips a week would be what it takes, whether I do all of them, or--
So we have to come up with language that allows that kind of understanding to be in, that part of the decision.
The trips are related to the business.
Related to the business.
Business.
Right. And with only four employees allowed anyway, that, I think, the math still--
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Is that all right?
That makes sense to me. The thing is, if you put it on one thing, just saying those non--
I got it. I got it. Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Do board members have any general comments or concerns before I was going to read through our findings and the conditions for everyone who's in the audience? Now I'll read through them, you can read through them yourselves, but anybody?
Might interrupt on business trips versus personal trips. We received a letter, didn't we? Might have thought excluding personal trips to go out and buy food at the grocery or something.
Yeah.
We did.
Yes. Right. We're doing that.
Okay, that's already in there?
Yeah.
Well, the language was, the language is in there, the request was to put it in related to transporting dogs, so I think the clarification needs to be that it will be business trips as opposed to personal trips.
Okay.
And it's easy enough. I mean, if it says non-resident employees and/or residents conducting business, it'd be the inclusive category captured by the 60 trips. I think that's easily accomplished.
Okay, Ben?
Should I stand?
Yes.
Please. I think, and obviously we can, you know, speak together perhaps about how the language might be tweaked, Brian, but I think the broadening it to resident employees conducting business is a little bit problematic, because Jenny, I mean Jenny technically is not an employee, she's the principal, but, I mean, she may go out and meet, you know, go and meet with a client somewhere at their property, having nothing to do with transporting dogs, and we wouldn't want something like that counted as a trip.
No, it would be, because we're, oh, I see, you're focusing on just the business trips.
Yeah, the business trip, I think, might, you know--
Well, we're going to have to work on this one.
I did have five items that I wanted to discuss in the draft, if possible.
Fine.
I appreciate, first of all, getting the advanced copy, appreciate the thought that went into drafting it, and by and large, we're very happy with the draft, and think that it comports with everything that's been discussed, but I did have five issues I wanted to raise. So the first is with regard to the potential for an annual open house. That was something that was in Jenny's original proposal, and we never, even though it was never a focus of conversation, we didn't, we didn't sort of, we didn't drop it from our proposal, we, you know, kept it in. It would, Jenny can explain why, she'd like to do that, and the idea would be if the board was so inclined to permit one annual open house at the property, and Jenny, why don't you explain why? That's something that you think would be important if the board was willing to consider it.
So the intent in putting it in the original proposal is that we don't operate a dog daycare in the traditional sense, so our clients are not permitted to come to the property. We won't be having classes there on the weekends, and so there's no opportunity for clients to actually see, you know, they take it on face that we do a good job, and by and large, our clients know us at this point, but as we grow, for us to be telling clients that we'd like to take their dogs, and they don't get to see where they go, or what they do, or meet the staff, I thought an annual house would be a good opportunity to say, you can't show up, you can't come see us, but once a year, you have the opportunity to come see the property. And what form that takes, I'm fairly open, obviously, as we grow, the number of clients who would like to see the property will probably grow, so whether that's picking, you know, an afternoon, or, you know, a holiday, Monday, or, you know, an hour, a couple hour span, fairly open, but we would like an opportunity at least to be able to tell clients that there's one chance a year for them to see what we're doing, where their dog goes.
John, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So would this be an open, open house, to the general public open house?
To our clients.
To your clients.
Yeah.
So to your 40 clients, so say 40 times 2 is 82, or maybe more, depending on the building structure.
Right.
People to come by during a certain time interval.
Exactly.
A limited time interval.
Yeah. Yeah, and I mean, we'd even be open to doing, like, if your last name is A through N, you get to come on this day, and if it's this to this, you can come on this day, but some opportunity, at least, that our clients can see.
Have you ever done anything like this before?
No.
Do you know of other places that do do it?
No daycare does things the way we do them, so they're always open to clients coming for tours whenever they want, but--
So we, you don't really have a sense yet about the number of people that would respond positively?
Yeah, I mean, essentially, I guess where Dory and I had worked in animal shelter previously, they had something similar to an open house, that would be one day for people to come through and, you know, ask questions. And it tends to be something that people enjoy, and it's, you know, for our clients, they ask frequently if they can come and see the farm, and meet the staff, and we've sort of been like, nope, sorry guys.
Would you like to open this up to the neighbors as well?
We could, yeah. I mean, yeah, the form that it takes, I'm fairly open to. I think it would just be that chance for--
Well, personally, I can see as a business how you'd like, if I had a dog that was staying with you, I would like to see what that facility looks like.
Right.
So that makes sense. What about you guys?
I don't see where once a year is going to be a benefit. I think once a quarter, if you arrange to do something more beneficial for you.
I would also be open to doing once more.
Let's start with one a year. Thank you so much.
I'm being gracious. No. Weekdays are very bad because of school buses and stuff, as we mentioned before.
Right.
But I would seriously have you give some thought to Saturday morning between 9:00 and 11:00. All right?
I'm there.
Saturday mornings, 9:00 to 11:00. But no more than one a year, but I'll go with four.
And I think Jenny, that weekend would be when we would be out to--
That's right.
I think that would be the most--
Because they have to observe the same conditions that we are looking for here.
Right.
I'll express the concerns of some neighbors that were concerned over weekend traffic.
Yes.
So you want to take that into consideration, as to when you select your date, because again, we want to make everybody comfortable with this.
Yeah. My thought was maybe like a Labor Day, Monday, when normal people would have a lookout, you know.
Based on what we've heard, everybody is concerned about children playing in the streets, and so the extent to which you could have these open houses at a period of time when the children aren't playing in the streets, I think that they do.
I agree with John. I think if you did, you know, relatively early Saturday morning, you know, you have landscapers mowing, people mowing the lawns, you know, it's going to be the least impact possible, I would say.
And the Red Sox aren't playing.
That's important.
Okay. So we'll need to come up with some language for the whole, I think we can do that tonight. What else, Ben? Any other comments on the open house issue?
Stay to the max, you can talk about that.
Okay.
I'd like to thank you for our generosity.
I was just about to thank you, especially for the orderly suggestion.
Will invite you, don't worry.
Looking at number six on page four, and that's repeated in the conditions, but just to talk about the substance of it. So currently, it says, "Non-resident employees will travel to and from the site only during permitted hours and days of operation." Something that we're not certain that we have asked for before, and so I'm not going to claim that we've brought it up, I don't know that we have, but as it's written right now, all non-resident employees would have to be gone by 3:00, which is what we agreed to and what makes sense. However, Jenny requests consideration of being able to do a monthly staff meeting, again, once a month, which would make sense to be done while the staff is there, you know, so that instead of them leaving at 3:00, that once a month, they could stay till 4:00 or 4:30 for a monthly staff meeting. I recognize it's a new request, maybe you can explain why you want to do it, and it's something we wanted to put in front of you for your consideration.
I just thought for the change that we're going to be making, and adding a staff member, and sort of structuring the business in this way, to be able to have a monthly staff meeting onsite would really just for organizational purposes, make a lot of sense to us, rather than, again, you know, adding to weekend traffic, or coming early when kids are going to bust up, having them stay until half in person.
So is this a staff meeting, I'm sorry for interrupting, but is it a staff meeting for how many employees?
It would be for all the employees, so that would be the only time that--
So the dog walkers, the trainers, whatever, maybe you have, what's that total number?
Right. 10.
Yeah, I think we're getting close to where, we're getting into how you should run your business, I mean, you want to have a staff meeting, you should get a lot of staff meetings.
Yeah, I guess my concern, just because of the wording, I didn't, I didn't want to have a staff meeting and then get in trouble for having a staff meeting at, you know, from 4:00 to 5:00, when that's outside of our typical hours.
I mean, everybody has staff meetings, I mean, you've got a business, I mean, I don't, that's my, what do you guys think?
Well, I think the 93 was primarily focused on transporting the dogs.
Right.
So I don't see that having a staff meeting would be problematic to this section.
Okay. But the dog activity will still be there.
It's, you're right.
Now it's 22 more trips. 20, sorry.
What's the one?
10.
Through the chair?
Yes.
We're down significantly from where we are right now, which I just want to bring back up to the table, we're at 120 trips right now, so we're reducing that number significantly.
Right. Well, I don't know, I mean, you could, you can have your staff meet, I guess, I don't know, what do you guys think? George?
How many are always off-site, the staff, of walking dogs? Does everybody come in every day?
No. So we have a lot of, like, we have some people who work Monday, Wednesday, Friday, you know, we have something to do. We do every day, but are dog walkers, and so we don't really see them, so that would just be the opportunity for everyone to get together for a, you know, touch base, which currently we just do via email, so it's not impossible to do, it's just less convenient.
I guess, as I hear everyone's response, and even though my initial reaction was you, I don't want to get too much into how you should run your business, I guess I'd like to know, of your three other requests, are they all increasing in traffic?
No.
Okay.
In fact, none of them involve that.
Why don't we hear those three first?
Okay. So number nine on page four, regarding providing the list of the vehicles, plate numbers and names of employees. So we do have a confidentiality concern with regard to the name of someone and their car registration being public. I haven't looked at the data privacy laws around this, but I know that typically, you know, a name paired with a driver's license number, I believe, and certainly a social security number would not be public record, and so, you know, frankly, there's a little bit of a concern in Jenny, you know, having discussed some of these conditions with her employees today, of maybe, you know, some of her folks not wanting to have their license, their car registration information known to everybody, who can just, you know, go to town hall and ask for that list. So I'm not sure how to deal with that, whether perhaps names wouldn't have to be provided, or there could be some allowance for redactions, or, you know, invocation of public records exemptions, or that sort of thing. So just a general, some general misgivings over confidentiality concerns about number nine.
George?
I have a thought for you. I have several listings of names in Martha's hands, but you wouldn't have authority to give the names out or the plate numbers.
If it were on file, it would be a public record. That's all, and I don't think that's the question, respectfully, of the chair, of the numbers. The question is, is whether or not the combination of that info would trigger any kind of privacy confidentiality issues. And typically, when you talk about those sort of red flag triggers, and this happens in all data handling within towns, and any, you know, business entity, you're talking about more, you know, social security account numbers, those kinds of things, driver's license numbers, less so for plates and the identity of the driver.
Right, that's what I was saying.
So, you know, we can look at it, if that's the board's wish, but I suspect that it's not going to rise to the level of a protected privacy interest, just that basic information.
Okay.
I would say that as members of the general public, I'm not aware of an ability to, you know, find out the identity of a car owner through the license plate number, obviously the police, you know, have those in your own plate.
Different requirement.
Right. So it's not, that particular combination isn't something that's generally available to the public, and so that, you know, even though it may not technically trigger any types of data privacy laws, it was still, you know, just a concern. And, you know, perhaps, maybe one way to handle it, and I've spoken with you, Jenny, about this in depth, but given that the police would not be providing that information, perhaps the names on this list only need to be provided to the police department, so that that can't be, the police aren't going to give that up, whereas if it's in, you know, Martha's files, as you said, and it's a public record, and it would be burdensome to have to ask you to invoke some public records exemption, which may not even apply. So that might be a way to handle it, would be just that the police have the full, the list that is indicated here to be provided to the police, but that the list minus the names be provided to the town planner and the zoning enforcement officer.
Well, sometimes we don't need social security numbers.
Right.
And that really would be a problem.
I just think our employees are very happy to comply with our code of conduct, they're happy with the magnets. That was the first time that they sort of like, you know, we walk dogs part-time, we're not really interested in having our information on public record for, you know, anyone in town to know who I am and where I drive, so. And again, we have, obviously, we got this this morning, so it was sort of just a first run-by, but that was the first time the employees have been a little bit concerned on their end, so.
Martha, do you have any thoughts on this?
I mean, I could certainly talk to the chief about it as well, to see what he might suggest for this, and Brian, I could go a little further.
I have to say, it raised the question of my mind when I saw it, so.
Okay, so we have to do some work on it. Okay.
I was just going to say, I think all that matters to us as neighbors is that there's signage and maybe a number on the car. I mean, we don't need, we just need to be able to say, okay, car number seven with Seacoast went by at 30 miles an hour, or swerved, or did whatever. I don't think we need that personal information at all. I don't think anybody's looking for that.
Okay. The number on the tag is good.
Well, I'm thinking--
On the side.
Yeah, and I mean, by all rights, actually, I know that for me, if it's, if you're doing a commercial venture with a vehicle, that's supposed to have commercial tags, and it's supposed to have signage by law for Massachusetts anyway.
Right.
So you have to watch out--
You are aware of that.
That's if you have business events with a car, yeah.
Well, you are using your vehicles commercially, so you should be commercially registered.
Actually, as an LLC, because it's dual-use, you aren't supposed to, but if we buy a commercial vehicle, that one will have Seacoast Canine all over it, so.
So that raises a question of liability.
Yeah.
So you have an employee who is representing your business.
Yeah.
And it's identified as your business, gosh forbid, doesn't act about.
That is covered by our liability.
That is covered.
So our employees, if they have a client's dog in the vehicle, the liability covers that. But the vehicle, if the vehicle insurance isn't business insurance, you by law are not supposed to put decals on them, unless it's 100% for business use.
Wow.
I bought my car three months ago, and I asked.
All right.
Welcome to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Martha, you and Brian will work on this to streamline it a bit. Okay.
I have a quick question.
Yes, please.
Just for clarification, are your drivers independent contractors as employees or drivers?
Employees.
They're employees.
Yes. We don't have any independent contractors.
You've got a lot of liability.
Yes.
Sorry.
We pay a lot of money for our liability insurance, yes.
Yeah, you know it too.
Okay, next.
I appreciate your comments with regard to the confidentiality thing, and I think that maybe we'll--
Yep.
Okay. Number 10 on page four, which again has its corollary in the conditions. Employee vehicles, could we say, non-resident employee vehicles having the magnets, because again, for Jenny and Dory, when they're coming and going for other things, we wouldn't want them to have to put the magnets on, and it also might cause confusion about the count, you know, if people are counting by the number of times they see the magnet. Jenny's going grocery shopping, we just want to, so it seems like non-resident employee might be the best way to handle the issue of the decal and the magnet.
It seems like, how long she's not transporting dogs. Next.
Just if you want for your notes.
That's true.
Martha and Brendan, the corollary to that one is condition number 15. Corollary to the issue with the police department is condition number 14. And then the final comment that we had on page six, condition number one, in terms of the recording of the special permit. So basically, what we'd like to ask, and I think this, I have a way that I think it should be done if the board is amenable, is that the, essentially that this wouldn't take effect for 30 days, not obviously for purposes of the appeal and so on, that's statutory, but like, you know, Jenny's going to have to put a fence in, and that's going to take some time to do, so my thought was one way to give her a little bit of time to get her ducks in her own, and make sure she's complying with the things in here where she needs to take some affirmative steps, would be to say at the beginning of condition number one, within 30 days, the applicant shall record the special permit, et cetera, and then paired with that would be that the one-year duration would begin at the point she records the special permit, so where she would have up to a month to do the thing she needs to do before she has to begin to comply, record it, and then the one-year anniversary would be from the date she records it. Or some other way where she basically is given a little bit of time to get the fence in and to do some of those things.
The board could also set a timeframe in which the fence needed to be installed.
And Martha, if you're asking, you can share. The question sort of overlaps two issues, which is compliance with the conditions and the exercise of the permit itself. So the year expiration is triggered by the recording and the exercise of the permit, which is actually ongoing, and the compliance issues are something you have a little bit more control over, the fence needs to be-- If the fence needs to be erected, you of course have a lot of discretion and flexibility in terms of when you'd like to see that happen. And that is maybe parallel, but not directly linked to track to the one-year running period.
I guess I'm not really thinking I can opine on this right now. I don't understand it that well, that well. George, you can.
I was wondering if someone had.
So I think we'll need some time to digest it. I think I understand it, but I don't understand by what I just read, so. I'm gonna give, since it looks like we're carrying some things forward, I'd like to carry this one forward too and take another look at it.
Can I just ask for clarity?
You can do that.
For my own clarity. So if I understand that what you're proposing is that the one-year starts from the day it's recorded and yet prior to that day it's recorded, that you have thirty days more or less to get the fence up, so that.
That's pretty much right, given that you have, you certainly have discretion on the length of the special permit and when you would have the review, and so it seems logical that.
So you want basically close to thirteen months.
That, yeah, effectively, it would end up being a thirteen-month with that sort of grace period at the beginning to.
I guess my concern is it's a four-week wait to get a fence, so I didn't want to get in trouble for not having it. Because it takes four weeks and not to do the snow.
I'm not, I'm just not sure what the language is, that's all. Probably a few ways to handle it, and I'm sure that Martha and Brian. Yeah, but, all right, back to the staff meeting, am I right? We've done all the other. Yes, that's correct, yes, Mr. Chairman. So board members, have any thoughts on the staff meeting?
George? The only thought that passed my, through my mind by quickly, if you want the staff meeting close by, the library has a conference room, you wait there, I don't think there's any charge at all for it.
There you go.
Good thought, George.
That's a great point.
It would just mean, I mean, we have an office with all of our stuff when we are trying to.
I understand, but you could then alleviate this problem by using a public facility that is somewhat underused, and they'd appreciate you using it. Why don't we try that, see if it works?
Try it.
All right?
There's a staff meeting whenever you want.
Well, they're only open, what, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
They're open enough that.
They're open quite a bit.
They're open, they're open more now.
They're closed Monday.
Yeah.
They're opened up.
Until seven at night, one night, aren't they?
It's only in the summer when.
When you park.
Plenty of parking.
Do they allow dogs?
Oh.
Therapy dogs even?
You don't need the dogs for the staff meeting.
We do, we actually train our staff on handling dogs.
Oh, this is a training.
It's not a staff meeting then.
Well, it is, we call it.
A training, do you?
Could we have a training meeting once a month to make sure our trains are not.
Well, why don't we, why don't we check into that?
Yeah.
It's not a staff meeting.
I do think they allow therapy dogs.
Can we call the library and ask if they would allow something like that?
I think they do, because I think they have a regular program with therapy dogs.
Well, we'll look into that.
So as long as I can bring a dog, that's what.
Board, board okay with that, Peter?
The specimen, the animal.
Right, to practice on.
So I was gonna read through our decision, but it seems to me that we've had enough adjustments to it that maybe we should wait until the next meeting. What do you think, Martha? Take your advice.
I guess we do go.
Go through it?
Go through and see if there are any other ones that.
Okay, let me do that, all right. Here we go. Will bear your, ask your forbearance. You do not have, the public does not have this, but I will read.
I do have a few extra copies.
Why don't you hand them out to Adrian, to John, and.
Three copies here.
Do you guys need them?
No, they've got them, but.
They'll save it.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, so this is on Seacoast, Seacoast Canine Decision, Special Plan, Special Permit Planning Board Findings and Decision Draft 1B. With reference to the above special permit criteria, the board finds, one, that the proposed use is allowed by special permit in the residential agricultural district in accordance with paragraph ninety-seven dash three dot N, Table of Use Regulations in ninety-seven attachment four, and subject to the parameters agreed upon by the applicant and the conditions herein, the use is an appropriate use of land in accordance with paragraph ninety-seven dash one, purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw, and is consistent with the will and intent of the zoning bylaw to allow certain commercial uses within the RAG zoning district, subject to review and approval by the planning board of the planning board. That given the property's location adjacent to I-95 and three unimproved parcels, as well as the parameters agreed upon by the applicant and the conditions herein, the proposed use will not be obnoxious or injurious to the immediate neighboring properties. Three, that Seacoast Canine serves local clients and provides a level and type of dog care and training not provided elsewhere in the community. Four, that A, with the conditions placed on hours of operation and employee vehicle trips, the impact of traffic on a budding and nearby properties will be mitigated. And that P, and that B, there will be no street parking associated with the proposed use. Number five, that nothing connected with the use of structures will be stored between the street line and the front line of the structure, nor be visible from the street, and that the property will remain and will maintain its residential appearance from the street. Good decision. In view of the foregoing, the planning board hereby decides that the aforementioned dog daycare is proposed in a manner consistent with the requirements of section ninety-seven dash one and section ninety-seven dash three dot C-1A and the general requirement of section ninety-seven dash eleven C of the Town of Newbury zoning bylaw in that it meets all requisite criteria. It is therefore decided to grant a special permit for dog daycare training and play groups to Jennifer Ford Seacoast Canine LLC, thirty-five Downfall Road, Byfield, Mass. O-1922, subject to the following conditions, which were, as noted above, agreed upon by the applicant, and therefore, the planning board's decision to grant a special permit is expressly subject to and contingent upon the applicant's agreement to strictly adhere to each of these conditions. Number one, the applicant shall file this special permit decision with the Southern Essex County Registry of Deeds or Land Court of Registered Land, and a copy of the decision stamped with the recording information, book page, and land court document number shall be submitted to the town planner, the building commissioner, and the town clerk, and then we're gonna do some adjustments to that. Number two, any proposed material change to the use, size, configuration, footprint, or height of the existing or proposed buildings and site improvements shall require an amendment of this permit. This approval having been based on a review of the proposed use, buildings and site design as presented to the board in the above referenced materials. Any modifications to the property not identified and described in this special permit shall be subject to the same submittal review and hearing procedure as was the original filing. Number three, this special permit shall not be construed as approval from any other board, committee, official, or department. Number four, conditions of approval of all permits issued by other boards or agencies of the Town of Newbury shall be considered conditions of approval under this special permit. In the event that said permits contain conditions conflicting with the conditions hereof, the planning board reserves the right to amend the conditions of this special permit after hearing so as to render it consistent, it consistent, excuse me. Number five, a duly authorized agent of the town shall have the right to enter upon the property to ensure continued compliance with the terms and conditions of this special permit. Number six, there shall be no more than forty dogs total on the property at any time inclusive of any client's dogs, owner's dogs, or other dogs. Number seven, there shall be no weekend operations and no non-resident employees or client shall visit the work or work on the property on the weekends. Number eight, there shall be no more than four employees on the property at any one time exclusive of the residents living and working at the site, of whom there are now two. Number nine, there should be no more than sixty one-way trips, thirty round trips per week total, and no more than twelve one-way vehicle trips, six round trips per day total, by non-resident employees transporting dogs to and from the property. And that language will need to be adjusted somewhat. Operations are limited to the hours between nine AM and three PM inclusive Monday through Friday only. Non-resident employees may travel to and from the site only during permitted hours and days of operation. Number twelve, clients shall not visit the site absent a demonstrable emergency necessity in the need to do so, except for what we just talked about. Number twelve, uh, number thir, oh, we have two number twelves. There you go. Number thirteen, ingress and egress to the property by employees shall not create any nuisance by way of speed, congestion, or noise. Employees shall at all times drive their vehicles on downfall road in a way that is consistent and in harmony with the residential character of the neighborhood and allows for residents and other families to safely use the road and or adjacent, areas adjacent to the right-of-way for walking or play or leaving for or returning from school or work. Employee traffic shall not interfere with any local school buses, delivery, or mail vehicles. Number fourteen, all employees shall sign a code of conduct stating that they will strictly abide by condition number twelve, number thirteen above. Number fifteen, the owner-operator of the business shall provide a list of vehicles, including make, model, and license plate number, and the names of employees using those vehicles to be the town, to the town planner, zoning enforcement officer, and the police department. Said list shall be updated by the owner-operator semi-annually or upon any changes thereto. Number sixteen, all non-resi, all non-resident employee vehicles shall be identified by means of a magnetic signs containing the name of the business and mounted on both the driver's side and passenger's side of the vehicle. Number seventeen, the applicant shall install fencing in accordance with the requirements of the Newbury Animal Control Officer. Number eighteen, the planning board explicitly retains the right to, with notice after hearing revise, hearing, revise, modify, suspend, or revoke this decision in whole or in part for good cause, including, but not limited to, any substantial violation of these conditions and or any substantial derivation from the intent, purposes, or requirements of the zoning bylaw. Number nineteen, the approval shall expire at the expiration of one year from the date of its filing with the town clerk, but will be subject to renewal upon request of the owner-operator and after a duly noticed process. Number twenty, this approval shall not, shall expire if the property or business is sold, transferred, or conveyed, or upon any other disposition by which the current owner-operator no longer has full and complete control of the site and operation unless the planning board consents to the same in writing. Number twenty, twenty-one will put something in about the open house. I think it's admirable the fact that somehow my droning on did not put the baby to sleep. So, board members, do you have any comments as I've read through that to any, any of the items and any changes that you'd like to make?
Yes, on the size, marking the automobile vehicles. We talked about putting a large visible number on each sign so we can distinguish.
Eighteen by twenty-four would stand.
Eighteen by twenty-four.
Magnetic.
Would be fifteen.
Fifteen, the new fifteen, the new sixteen, the magnetic signs?
But contain a number that.
Containing the name of the business and number, right?
Right.
I mean, you could put a number on the back windshield, doesn't.
No.
Just put it all under the same size.
Size.
Just so people can identify the vehicle as an issue.
Got it, thank you.
You don't need your name reading on it.
No.
I have a question regarding.
There was a redundancy here, but fatal. Page four. Page four, paragraph nine, the article, the application provide a list of vehicles and so on. Here's a ten in.
Oh, it's in, it's in the conditions, and it's also in the.
The items that were agreed to.
Yeah, these are the items that are agreed to, and then we, we carry, we carry it forward as a condition.
Yes, they have one, okay. Team Ohio.
Martha, any comments?
No, they only have a question, Monday through Friday, does that, what about holidays? Does that make any difference?
I don't know.
They close on holidays.
They close on holidays.
There you go, they answered that.
The systems close. No, we close.
Okay.
Yes, I think this is a great procedure, everything's going pretty well. However, in the event of a transfer of ownership, what happens to this approval?
It goes away.
Goes away, okay.
It's the last one I read.
Yeah, the last clause.
Last clause.
Forgive me.
Eighteen or nineteen.
Okay. Okay, then I guess we will ask and direct Martha and Brian to get back together and make the appropriate changes as we discussed. And that we will bring this forward for a vote next week, next meeting, which is the seventh of November.
Seven oh five, right?
Let's, so let's, I think we should close this public hearing. What do you think? Am I right?
I don't anticipate, unless any of the board members do, Mr. Chairman, that you'll be taking any more evidence or testimony. Having a dialogue about the finer points of some language.
With them?
It is not evidence or testimony. You're not, you're not generating any facts or anything else. And it's always within the chair's discretion whether or not to invite comment from the applicant on those finer points.
Right.
So I leave it to you ultimately, whether or not you want to keep it open, just in case there are some points for example, if the public hear the refinements that we made on the conditions, they may have some experiences in the neighborhood that they want to add that color your understanding of some of those revisions we make, and you may want to leave the public hearing open so that you can receive those.
Okay. Peter, what do you think?
I think we've had a lot of discussion, and, you know, I, I'm kind of with the feeling that we've discussed, we've resolved, and I think it's okay from my perspective to probably.
Rachel?
I agree with Pete, I think, I think we can just carry on here.
Close the public hearing.
Let's close it. Could it serve a motion?
I move to close the public hearing, as a matter of second.
Any discussion further then? Hold those in favor.
All right.
Okay.
Second?
Second, we need a motion to, no, second one, Ryan.
Second motion. Yeah, okay, I didn't hear it.
We need a motion to carry this forward to our next meeting, and seven, I think seven oh five on November the seventh. Rachel?
I'm just carrying forward the fact that we're going to decide. Okay, I move that we take this up as a regular agenda item at the next meeting on November seventh, seven oh five.
Second, please. Second, hold those in favor. All right. Okay, we'll see you all in three weeks, or maybe not, maybe.
Looks like it.
See ya.
Matt?
You guys.
Your chair is standing here, you have to listen more. I was gonna show you the, the. It's a regal. Got the roll on. They don't count your trust. This is suburban.
She walks like fifteen miles a day.
How you doing?
All right.
Do you have other business to attend to this evening?
Yeah, if there's stuff with you, you can do it. Do you want to come around? Okay. Legal advice, please. All right, Jeffrey, haven't seen you in a while.
No.
So you're representing Channing, Charing Cross Realty Trust for the property at one seventy Orchard Street. They did come in and speak with Martha and came before us six or seven months ago?
There's a while ago.
A month ago?
Yep, yep, nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed?
I don't think.
So what, what new do you have to show us?
Well, I'm here today, and I'm not familiar with this process. It's sort of an unusual one to show up to a meeting to file the application. But I, my understanding is I'm here to file the application. I'm not, we're not actually supposed to be substantively discussing the project because the hearing hasn't been noted, started yet. So I've got the app, all the stuff, and I'm just gonna give it to you. I mean, so I can, I can just quickly say it's a twenty-five acre parcel off of Orchard Street. It's, the proposal here is to build fifteen small, single-family homes in the front portion of the parcel to preserve approximately seventy-three percent of the property as open space. Fifteen acres, so roughly five or six acres are gonna be the developed area and then the rest is gonna be open space. It's a pretty, I think, fairly straightforward, forward project.
So you haven't seen it yet, have you done your yield plan?
We have a yield plan in our application package. Martha has seen it. You haven't seen it yet because I haven't filed it, so we're gonna do that, but we have. So in our application package, and I can get you electronic copies if you want to be, to have easy access to the documents, they're public documents, but what you're gonna see in there is an application form, a concept plan which will show the yield plan, which is the conventional subdivision if they weren't gonna proceed with this open space residential development, and we're gonna do a conventional subdivision. It would be a fourteen lot subdivision, but it would take up a lot more space in terms of the area that's gonna be altered.
Right.
And you wouldn't have the open space protections associated with it and all that, but there's a plan that shows that yield plan, and there's a plan that shows the open space plan, sort of, we had Kim Turner of Katie Turner Designs, Katie Turner Designs, she's a landscape architect out of Newburyport, she's very good, but she's prepared some really nice visuals of the project and the development.
Okay.
We've worked with her for landscaping, I can get you the plans. We've also submitted, so you know, a definitive plan set. We are not asking you to review that at this point in time. That process comes after the special permit process, and it only happens if we get the special permit, but we provided it because it shows a lot of the details related to the infrastructure, the roadway design, and all that stuff that you might want to dig into on a particular issue, issues related to the special permit.
Any questions? I think you're right, we have to wait, let's have the presentation, leave your stuff off with us, and good luck.
Thank you.
Where is one seventy?
I'm sorry.
Where is it?
Bulgares' property?
Oh, okay.
It's, it's a lot's Pearson Drive.
Right, the old farm property there, on the west side of.
There's an older house that's there, you gotta.
Yep.
On the left.
Sort of goes in behind Pearson Drive, kind of.
But off of Orchard.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so just help me with how many copies you want, I've got plenty, but I've got one set with the check.
Okay.
Okay?
I'll take that.
Let's treat that as the original, they're all the same because they're all, they're all trying the same services. I'm giving you the copies for the Board of Health as well?
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll take.
Okay, so that's two for the Board of Health, and then do you want seven copies or eight copies in addition to the one I already gave you?
I'll take one.
How many?
They need to get distributed for review, so I'll take all of them.
Yeah, distribute it to various departments, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm giving you eight copies in addition to that original of the entire package.
Leave them back in there.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jim.
Martha, do we need a motion to accept?
So the board needs to make a motion to accept and to set a public hearing date. I did go through the most recent, things have been coming in a little bit piecemeal, so there are a couple of things that, like I noticed you actually don't have a certified abboters list.
Was that supposed to happen before we filed today or something that gets, that gets generated after the filing? I mean, I wasn't clear to this, so.
Yeah, I looked through your requirements, it's not actually in there as needing to do it, but that will have to happen.
Yeah, that's fine. So do you want me to request that or does your office?
Uh, no, you requested.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm gonna give you these two, these are for some of the more relevant plans, these are oversized copies.
Okay.
Okay, and it's a couple oversized copies of each of them, so I didn't include, there are a lot of oversized plans in there, but not of these colored versions, and this is the definitive plan set, so the peer review might want to see these.
Yeah.
So I'll just put these in. Okay, sorry. Okay, abboters list, yep?
Yeah, so you'll, you'll see the assessor's court for that.
Yep.
Okay.
So the board needs to vote to accept the application and then set the public hearing date. I'd like to make a suggestion regarding the public hearing date, it has to be within sixty-five days. We haven't talked about the Thanksgiving Eve meeting yet, but I would like to suggest that it be no sooner than the first meeting in December, because the next meeting will be too soon.
We can't hit the next meeting?
Um, only if, only if the, it won't give enough time for.
The reviewers.
Inter or you and get the abboters list.
Okay.
It is a special permit, so it requires a.
So what, what, what is the meeting in December?
It's the fifth. And we could try, but we have to get in tomorrow, I haven't even written yet.
Okay, so I move to accept the submission of OSRD's special permit application, one seventy Orchard Street, applicant Charing Cross Realty Trust, and to establish the date of the public hearing to open on December five, December five, at seven oh five P M.
Seven?
Second, any comment? All those in favor?
All right.
You're done.
Great, Martha, I'll talk to you also separately about the S code for the peer review consultant. Do you, we need a vote to authorize that to start prior to the hearing?
Um.
Or are you already authorized to do that?
I mean, that's kind of pocket of the process.
Okay.
So.
Great, thank you, look forward to the, to work on it again.
Good to see you.
Thanks.
You've been a stranger.
I know, and I thought I was gonna see that on TV, I tuned in and I, there's a parts meeting.
Yeah. See, I was. Okay. We're gonna be scheduled, well, we just did that, didn't we?
Well, is everybody in agreement to?
One meeting in November?
Cancel the November.
You don't want to do that. Potential zoning and general bylaw amendments? Again, the same group we had on last time, solar, noise, OSRD, and wireless. Well, solar is gonna be, we talked about this, J R was here last, last time on that, he has an interest in the solar. We really haven't made much progress on any of these, but I do know that Rachel volunteered.
I actually did look into the five G, and I don't think we have to worry about it for a while, so.
And they did.
So we should try and move forward with that one.
But we just have a, a template to use, you, you thought that.
I was gonna check with town council, see if she's.
Yeah, we just, we just figure out what town it is and I can go.
Okay.
Okay, Emily, I also talked to Emily to see if she could do some research if you'd like unless you want to, and current ones in other towns, to see what they're doing. Ones that have been recently.
I never refuse help. Yeah, I mean, I, I think we should just hear what town council advises, because they deal with all this stuff all the time, too.
Yeah, I don't want to be reprimanding them if we don't have to.
No.
So I'm meeting with her on Monday, so I'll add to my list of stuff to talk to her about.
So on solar, on the assumption that it does appear that the byfield project will move forward, I guess, George, you spent some time on this two years ago, didn't you?
It was the two years? Yes, two years ago, and J R was talking about an overlay district, and Martha, you and I have discussed that in the past, that the overlay district really is, would be preferred along power lines, and the question is, there's not that much room available along, you know, power lines because of Martin-Burns Day Forest.
Right, and the two, two projects that have been done kind of bookend.
Yeah. Yeah. And I don't know whether there are any other lines available, there's been some, some upgrading, I think, on Route one, but not very much. So it might be good to check with National Grid to see if there's gonna be any further upgrading of power lines in town.
Why do we think an overlay district would sort of improve our situation?
Well, it would be, off the top, it would take projects like, that are further afield and in the A R district out of con, out of consideration, and.
So it wouldn't include residential agricultural?
Well, it might be part of it because it would, maybe, maybe pieces of it, like it'd be.
No, that's what I'm just wondering, I'm just trying to figure out what, what we came from, you know.
I think it's trying to reduce, I think it's trying to reduce the potential conflicts that we've gotten in the last, last one.
Right.
And by, by trying to zero in on perhaps the, let's say the B L I, although I don't know if that makes sense, but let's, for argument's sake, the B L I.
For example, yeah.
For example, which is our, really our largest district outside of A R, and, and then an overlay along the power lines to say, well, this is where we really want solar to happen. One of the dilemmas we have is that we don't have that many older buildings that you want to say that's, solar should be put on those roofs. I always thought it should be done in Triton, I don't know, Triton never really did a lot of study on it, but they've got a lot of roofs.
They do, I think they've looked into it, I'm not quite sure.
What they did, or the governors, I mean, you know, there are a lot of buildings out there that would fit, we just don't have, I mean, look at all those buildings in the Newburyport Industrial Park, they're perfect.
Right.
Perfect, and, you know, you could put them on every one of them and really have quite a solar farm, but it is filled with legal issues because you've got easements and all these other rentals and, I mean, to do that, but we just don't have those kinds of old warehousing looking kind of properties in town. So we're left with what we just got, you know, guys taking down woodland and putting it in existing open space and areas that we'd rather not have them doing it.
Right, I mean, some of it I think we could address just by using the smart program criteria, which, you know, if you put it, you can't put it in prime forest land, prime like agricultural land, wetlands and things like that, so that takes a lot off the table anyway, but it's not.
No, wait, it says that you can't?
There's subtractors or.
There's subtractors, if you did, it's like, they're making it more difficult, as they should.
Right.
To do the kinds of projects that we just permitted.
Right.
Well, that's good.
So that might be one way to, to structure.
Start with that, start with the smart.
Rather than trying to identify an overlay district, because my, my fear is that if we say stick with the business and land industrial district, there's not that much land there, so a lot of it's forested itself, the land that's vacant.
And so you'd be, yeah, that's right. Of course, we want development to occur there, and it, it assumes that it's gonna be deforested.
Right, right, but it's only the best and highest use to put there.
No, that's why, that's why when we first considered this, I was against putting it in the B L I, because it would use our best land, but we haven't exactly shaken the thunder. What's that? Some fight song, isn't it?
I don't know.
It's a Notre Dame fight song, shake down the thunder, something like that, I didn't go there.
Me neither.
Well, what do we want to do about that? I mean, I think it's worthwhile having this discussion on that, because I think that the town would like to see some action on it.
I think so, and we, you know, we do know that we ran into issues as we went through the permitting process on, on that, and it would be good to address those. So I can certainly ask Lisa if she's got some, some ones that she think might.
That would be good.
Be a model.
Noise is, I think, almost, it's easy if we just get into it, I did some very early research last year and looked at, I think we had this discussion last time, Brookline and then some more rural areas, and the rural areas make sense, and I think what, what Sam is looking for here is construction hours and things like that, not so much operational, that he's having a tough time getting complaints.
That we established for the OSRD.
That we did establish, but we don't have it generally for the town.
I, I understand that, but we did establish it there as a place, perhaps.
It is, it is, and, but residents don't understand that in, you know, a, a, an, yeah, just a small housing project that goes up, I mean, there's almost no, no conditions on it at all. Although we did put, didn't we put something on Tru's project in terms of hours of operation?
I think we did.
And I think we may have done it with DePira, but we haven't done a lot of subdivisions yet, I mean. So I think that we should do something on noise, that's really a Sam issue, and I don't know, does he have anybody who could work with us on that, or is he looking for us?
Um, I mean, he's brought it up, but again, I'll, I'll ask Lisa about all of these.
Find out what his priority is, see, I think that, I think the wireless is a priority, I think the solar is a priority, and, oh, the OSRD, that's technical, isn't it?
That was a tweak in the language.
Well, let's just do it.
Yeah, so.
So let's tweak that, let's get into wireless and let's do solar. Okay, is that all right? So I think maybe, maybe beginning in December you can start to maybe ask for, well, do we, now, we have, Rachel is in charge of wireless, George is in charge of solar, because he did it before?
Yeah, I'd be really enjoying George on that, I'm interested in solar.
That's good.
Pete, you want to take noise?
Sure.
All right, there we go. Preliminary report by December fifth. Because before you know it, it's gonna be January.
And we have to start getting ready for the public hearings.
That's right. New business TBD, town planners report.
So.
Just gotta file.
I have a few others.
No, this is something that I remember last time, it's a CPTC fall workshops, we've got some interesting stuff going on, a lot of it unfortunately is not very close to us, but if anybody has any interest, please take one. There are a few things that we're trying to wrap up before, sooner rather than later, and one of, one of them is something that's been hanging for quite some time, which is the Caldwell Farm Trail. And we had quite some time ago, had some meetings with the Caldwell Farm folks, their board, on a proposed trail location, and had submitted a proposed trail agreement, a trail operation agreement to them, and never received any feedback from them. I did have, they actually retained an attorney, Pam Brown, with whom I've had a couple of conversations, nothing has really happened, so we're thinking that this might be the time to, Lisa has actually drafted a letter, and this might be the time to send it to see if we can bring this thing to a close and get the, the trail in. So John and I talked about it and, I guess, wanted to get a sense of the board of whether this is something that, that you would still support trying to move forward with, if it was a condition of the special permit, there is a trail easement, all of that was reported on the project, was included.
One of the things which is important for, do you guess George is, I don't know if he understands the real history of this, for, for you guys and, and we started working on this about five years ago.
Wow.
When Kathleen was the chair of the board, and Jerry Green came to our meeting, and.
David Powell was very active.
And David was very active.
and had submitted a proposed trail agreement, a trail operation agreement to them, and never received any feedback from them. I did have, they actually retained an attorney, Pam Brown, with whom I've had a couple of conversations. Nothing has really happened, so we're thinking that this might be the time to, Lisa has actually drafted a letter and this might be the time to send it to see if we can bring this thing to a close and get the, the trail in. So John and I talked about it and, and I guess wanted to get a sense of the board, whether this is something that, that you would still support trying to move forward with. It was a condition of a special permit. There is a trail easement. All of that was reported on the project as a credit.
One of the things which is important for, do you guess George is, I don't know, he understands the real history of this, for, for you guys and John. We started working on this about five years ago.
Wow.
When Kathleen was the chair of the board. And Jerry Green came to our meeting, and...
David Powell was very active.
And David was very active. And so we worked on it. We, we went to at least five meetings at the Caldwell Farm offices. They came here to a number of hearings that we had on it. We made proposals to them about how to move forward and walk the trails three times. And we still got some very serious resistance the last time Martha and I were out there. And so Lisa has drawn up a lawyerly letter that basically says, you have the responsibility for doing this. You should be doing it. If you, we'd like you to get a, a plan to the planning board by December first. And if you don't, we'll, we will notify the zoning enforcement officer, and he will have the right to enforce fines since you are noncompliance with the permit.
Dating back to the permit?
Yeah, dating, well, I don't know. Probably daily from now on.
Does, does the easement place the burden on them, or does it place the burden on the, was it?
It was actually the developer who was supposed to, to do the trail, and then Alan did, just kind of blaze a trail roughly out there. And then when we went out with Doug, he, he made some alterations to that. Ultimately, if there's any, if a decision can't, or agreement can't be reached, it's the conservation commission that has the right to go.
And they can go out and just blaze the trail.
Yep.
What we've been trying to do, and what Lisa's letter says, is that we'd like to do this in cooperation with the association.
That's better.
But if you don't, we have the right to do this.
Will this be a Merry Christmas letter about the fifteenth of December?
Could be. No, I think it'll go sooner. She drafted it some time ago. We just haven't had the time to go over it.
How, how quickly is blazed? Who then maintains it?
That was part of, that was part of the trail agreement that we were putting together.
We sent them the trail agreement that said we'd maintain it.
That we would maintain.
Yep, and we'd pay for it.
And we would actually put it in with our D W crew and, and some volunteer.
We, we were gonna pay for it and maintain it. And we wanted their adherence to it, that they would be a partner with us to report problems and issues and be the eyes and ears, because it's there, basically, in their backyard. And let us know what, any issues that come up. And notes, help us police it without saying you're the policeman. The last, I think the meeting, last meeting Martha and I had was two years ago. Am I right, Martha?
Ah, could be, yeah, could be.
So it's been, it's been disappointing. I'm sure they just wanted to go away, but it really shouldn't. Uh, because it's, it's an obligation that they have. It's in their, all of their condo docs. So...
It's also part of the conservation restriction, so to actually try to remove it would be a complicated process.
That's what they wanted. So I asked Martha to put it on her, uh, report to get your sense. We don't have to vote formally, but to get your sense. Do you still agree that we should pursue this?
Yes.
And if you do, then we can say that in the letter. Do you know what I mean? That says the board believes that, so I guess that's, sent to the board.
Do we, is, because it has a conservation restriction, is it protected under Article ninety-seven?
I don't know.
What would, ninety-seven being the zoning code?
No, ninety-seven being the, um, an article of the state constitution.
Oh, oh, I will know.
Maybe it would have to go through a legislature to come out. Yes, yes.
I think you're right.
Yes.
No, in fact, I remember, our, our early, um, analysis of this was that if it were taken out, if they got rid of this, it would take an act of the legislature.
Okay, okay. Good to know, yeah.
Yeah, so it's not a superfluous thing at all. I mean, they got, what do we figure, seven extra units?
They got, they got extra units, um...
You know, their value is seventy thousand each.
And so, so I guess it sounds like not being involved at the...
Yeah?
Seven hundred.
Seventy, seventy thousand, seven hundred thousand each, two point five million?
Put in the trap.
Right? All accrued to the developer.
That's the problem with developers, long.
And he sold this, you know, obviously before the real estate recession, 'cause it was completed in oh four, oh five. It was sold out by oh seven.
So how have they been able to block it?
Just by saying stubborn.
Stubborn.
Stone wall.
And, 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 and my attitude was, these are residents of Newark. You know, the, you know, let's, no, let's, let's try to, you know, work with them. And by and large, we had some people who were very cooperative, and then we've had some people who haven't been very cooperative. So I think we'll then indicate to Lisa that is the intent of the board to do this, and that we'd like her to send the letter.
Yeah, I mean, one of these, it, it...
And then Doug.
One of these, it, it was kind of in their attorney's hands for quite some time, so we were kind of waiting. There was a dialogue between her and Ginny, and nothing was forthcoming, so.
Well, so it sets precedent for future ones.
That's my concern. That's, that's my big concern, and so.
You know, it, it is amazing that we haven't done more subdivisions and O S R Ds in the last, I think with all the, we are doing smaller ones. You know, you have these things like Newman Road, which were really, how is that done?
Well, that was all through the A and R processes.
It was the A and R process. It was all done through A and R.
The last one was a four-lot subdivision, but then one person bought all of it and built a large house on it.
And then Tru's was a subdivision.
It was the conventional subdivision.
A lot of housing being built down there, more than, more than rest of the town in change. Well, anyway, okay, anything else you wanna?
Um, the only other thing was, I don't know, probably haven't received a flyer yet, but, um, uh, the town meeting warrant is gonna include an article about the building project. So I thought if anybody was interested in getting an update on that, I could do so. But it will be discussed. The architect will be there next Tuesday and give a presentation along with the owner, our owner's project manager on the project, why it's gotten to where it is right now, and what the costs are, and all that kind of stuff.
I'd like to see that.
That's it.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what you have to say.
So, um, we started, the building committee started meeting last May with our architect and the owner's project manager. And as we, you know, one of the first things they did was, was hold a series of interviews, which they also looked at, at the requirements of the fire department, thinking that that will fit into this municipal complex at some point in the future. So we didn't wanna make a mistake and set things in place where that wouldn't work. As we developed the program and then we got into schematic design, it became clear that, um, what we were seeing as working for us did not, couldn't be done for the six point five million dollars that was voted the year, uh, last January, so January twenty seventeen. Um, as that became more clear, the building committee went to the selectmen and said, okay, we're now looking at a program of about twenty-two thousand dollars, or twenty-two thousand square feet between the two buildings for a cost of fourteen million dollars. And we don't wanna go any further without bringing this to your attention and, um, getting some direction. Um, the selectmen directed the committee to look at a few options. One, to see what could be done for eight point five million, which would be the six point five with a thirty percent escalation for current construction costs. And the other, to see whether there could be some significant cost savings in combining, um, the two facilities back into one building. And, um, going through the exercise, the architect feels that we can save about a million dollars by doing a combined building, which would be on the site of the existing town hall. Um, and it's not a perfect program, but it's a workable program for both the town offices and for the police department. And it, it benefits us in having shared spaces, um, mechanical utility spaces, one shared elevator. And we're proposing to have one large meeting room, which would be on a lower level with, with police. It is of about a thousand square feet, which would also serve, it would serve for their training purposes, emergency management, as well as the selectmen's meeting room. So that's, um, you know, that's a thousand square foot savings immediately. This is a rendering that the, um, architect has done. We were kind of excited to find that there actually was a very large Grange Hall on that site, built sometime between, sometime after nineteen oh five. It burned in, in nineteen twenty-seven, I think, twenty-seven, twenty-five. And it was replaced with a building that's there now, which was sold to the town in nineteen thirty-seven.
Fred Thurlow remembers the Grange Hall. Is that possible? No.
No. Well, depends on when it was born.
Well, no, he's, he's no use, R H. But it does look like the entry is still similar.
It is similar. It's similar.
But it is a rebuild, not a rehab.
Eric said it burned.
The current, yeah, burned. It burned. So according to what we found, it was, um, yeah, it's burned in nineteen twenty-seven. And then the replacement building was built after that, I guess, probably around nineteen thirty, thirty-three.
This is a great photo. It shows the trolley lines and elm trees. And, and telephone poles.
But there've been, um, you know, there, there are concerns that are very strong about the scale of the building on the site. One of the things that this actually does do in terms of, um, kind of the overall master plan for the site is it provides much more parking than two separate buildings does. We're coming up short with having a standalone police station and a big town hall. But there, there are concerns about cost, about size, about program, um, and about, um, location on the site, all of which should be discussed next Tuesday.
How many people showed up at the meetings? Eight or nine?
Um, it has varied. In the beginning, for a long time, there was one person who came. We were meeting at seven AM on Friday morning because of Eric's schedule, 'cause he needed to get into, into Boston for work. Uh, the last few meetings we've had, maybe eight to ten. Uh, there was a public forum that was held on, uh, October sixth, and, um, probably about the same number.
Right.
But a few new faces, some people who had not been there before. Um, and I think unfortunately, people who haven't been involved, and we've been working on this since, for fourteen years now.
Three years ago, Riley worked on this for seventeen.
Oh, good.
Did they really?
Really?
So I said in the paper.
So, um, you know, there are people who are saying that we should slow it down, um, because they, they really haven't been aware of what the, you know, the process and the timeframe and how many different committees we've had looking at this, starting back in two thousand and four. So it's, we'll see what happens.
So, I mean, they obviously, if they came up with this configuration, they must figure that it answers all the program questions, but...
Um, they're close. I mean, it's, we've been, um, Tracy and I for the town offices and Chief Riley, um, for the police department, but we're very closely with the, the architect. There are compromises in both floor plans in terms of meeting all of our program requirements, but we feel that it, it's, it's good enough to...
So this one, the land that we were getting from the fire department, is it used for parking?
It's used for parking, currently. The thought is for future. Um, we know that the fire station has a lot of deficiencies and will need to be replaced at some point. So in order to keep that operational, we built a new one where the parking is shown, and then the central area would be parking and landscaped and really serve both facilities.
Is it three stories or is it two?
Um, it's two stories with a third, with an attic level which can be used for storage or future expansion. So the current scheme has the elevator and the staircase.
Going into the attic?
Yeah.
Or meeting room or something like that? Presentation, right?
You know, it's not gonna be built out now, but the possibility is there for the future.
Thank you.
There should be an article appearing in the Daily News about it by middle of the week.
Who's gonna write it, or did Lowell?
Uh, Richard Lodge.
Lodge, did he write it?
Uh, he is writing it.
Oh, good.
Tracy and the chief, and I met with him.
There's been a lot of letters, a lot, a number of letters against.
New names.
Some old names.
Those are just...
Fred?
I guess.
But, um, you know, I expect there will be a lot of discussion at, uh, town meeting. I think it's Article seven. And, um, then it does require two steps. It's a demand of ballot on the November sixth ballot, as well as a town meeting of the appropriation. But I, um, I wasn't at the October sixth meeting, but my sense is that, um, you know, there will be discussion from the selectmen on what the issues are with six point five million. And, but, um, they feel that this is the best way to solve the issues.
What are the percent voting requirements now for the public meeting and then?
Uh, it's gotta pass a town meeting by two-thirds.
Two-thirds, and then half?
Then some, just a simple majority for the ballot.
Yeah. Martha, the warrant article number seven is open-ended as far as money is concerned. I didn't see anything mentioned.
Um, I've got the warrant here. That line, which came directly from bond council and the statutory. So I think what it may be, the language of the warrant kind of sets the parameters, but the motion may actually include the number. That's what they do sometimes.
Okay.
So the actual motion is made on the floor.
Tries to get it passed the way it did, so it'll never get passed.
Yeah, so when the motion is made, I'm not sure who's gonna make it, um, it will be to see if the town will appropriate. There'll be a number in there, and we're looking at twelve million dollars.
It'll be fourteen million next year.
Well, that's, well, that's one of the issues. I mean, we've, you know, we're looking at a thirty percent estimation already, and the longer it waits...
Rates are going up.
The more expensive it's gonna get. Construction costs, contractors are busy, tariffs have increased, and material costs, so...
Rates are going up. Rates are going up as well, are they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just heard the Fed's gonna raise them again. So, um, anyway.
Well, we have nothing on for town meeting this year at all.
No.
Well, Martha, that's a lot. You worked awful hard on this.
Thank you.
Ain't gonna be easy.
Is there more to your report?
Um, no, well, the only other thing is just a brief master plan, um, thing. But, uh, got some review comments from gentlemen to the natural resources and, um, the historic resources sections. So I'm gonna incorporate those and then get back to you and Kristen.
Okay.
And then, what, are we, are we still, what's going on with Roberta? Was she waiting for us to send her this?
She's waiting for us, and she really needs to see it. She wants to see it before.
Before she gives us the cost, doesn't she?
She'll give us a real scope.
So when do you think we could send her to her?
Um, I don't know.
Don't know.
Give her firm date, but...
Like November first?
Soon.
Soon? November thirteenth?
Soon.
November thirteenth?
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Please, on report, Board of Selectmen.
Uh, a lot of good discussion with them. It's really the Dolly project.
Yeah.
We did have excitement on, uh, Newman Road yesterday.
Yeah, well, I, I couldn't get through it. I didn't know what it was all about.
Well...
And I saw the picture in the paper today.
Yeah, there was a, a group shooting a pilot for some, I think it's a Showtime program. And they were doing a stunt down there. The car that goes off the road to avoid a pedestrian and a raccoon, and so...
Fluke, the Fluke Fire Department. That's what they called it. That is the picture in the paper. But the interesting thing is, so we went to Mosley as... But the interesting thing is, so we went to Maudslay yesterday morning. Could go every morning, take the dog. And we couldn't get to Maudslay either.
Really?
And they were doing something at Maudslay. And I don't know if it was the same crew or what. We wound up going to Mill Pond in West Newbury. But, and there wasn't, they weren't doing like, um, work on the road because today there's no sign of any work being done, so something was going on.
No, maybe they were filming there too.
They could have been filming there too.
Yeah. Newman Road was, was the remote country road.
Yeah. Well, you couldn't get there on Boston. No, Hay Street.
Hay Street, they shut that down too.
And Newman Road. And I don't know, whatever, is Hay Street still the one? Yes, it is. That then comes into Newman Road. You couldn't get down there coming from your house.
Right.
Down there. That was fun. Just one day shoot.
One day shoot.
Concon, anything?
Yeah, we met, uh, yesterday, last night. We're busy. We had, uh, four requests for, uh, applicability for the NOI and we had thirteen NOIs.
Really?
And there's nothing that exciting except I put together this, this little analysis that I think is interesting. In the past few months, we've dealt with six NOIs to build new homes on Plum Island. Two of those are on a bare lot. Four of those, and, and of those two, one has been approved back August, I think it was, and the other is just dragging on forever. There are four NOIs that involve destroying the existing home and building a new one. One of those we approved last night and there are three, two that are progressing normally and one that's kind of dragging along. But there's a tremendous amount of activity in Plum Island. And it's not little stuff, you know, because.
So the ones that are demolishing existing structures, are they older structures with older foundations?
Yes.
And they're putting in the new foundations?
So in that respect.
So in that respect, if that's what you want to see?
Yeah.
Of course, it's also probably more expensive structures. And so the return to the town is better.
Yeah.
They have to stay essentially in the same footprint?
Yeah, there's some limitations. They, they can, you know, maneuver a little bit, but.
I think they can add square footage, but it's, it's held to bedrooms, isn't it?
Um, well, it's held to three things.
Twenty percent.
One is the footprint, which is twenty percent, including decks and stairs. One is the floor area ratio, which is twenty-five percent of the lot area, um, can be used for living space. And then the other are the setbacks. And when I was doing projects down there, I could move it around a little bit if I was making the setback less non-conforming than it was. I think they try to keep it within footprint.
Yeah, there's not a lot of room for new construction on vacant land. I think that's, that's that number of minutes, isn't it?
So there's, there's.
Very limited amount of.
Well, there were originally, I think, twenty-four lots, um, that came, that were deemed to be, twenty-four vacant lots that were deemed to be buildable when they did the water and sewer project.
That's fifteen years ago, isn't it?
So I don't know how many of them are on the census.
Oh, that's interesting stuff. Where, where are they generally located? Just all around here?
North.
North.
Yeah. Except for one south, well, I take that back. Two south, four north.
Do you know what's going on in Newburyport? Similar stuff?
I don't.
That's, that is a shame. We don't really coordinate that much with them. We just don't know.
Yeah, it's a difficult, actually.
Yeah, no idea.
Well, that's, that's interesting. Thank you. Anything else on Concon? No? ZBA, anything?
I had a presentation which I left on my desk.
Ah.
Get it together next time.
Planning Commission meets tomorrow night. I'm not sure if either one of us will be able to go into it. But we met last week, I think, or last month that we reported on it.
Right.
When Newbury was the, uh, topic of a major presentation, a multi-work that Peter Pippin does and the Great Marsh and everything else. And they, they really do a lot. They support us tremendously.
They do. They are so wonderful. They developed this whole store order app for us that we're using for, for our, you know, NDS and S four compliance and stuff. They're great. Tomorrow night, actually, they're doing focus on West Newbury and it's going to be, the meeting's going to be in West Newbury.
Okay. Anything else for the order? And I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Who'll do adjourn?
I'll.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.